There wasn't no, no chance. How do you pronounce, how do you pronounce it?
I can check. I don't know if that's right.
Okay.
Is it?
Huh?
See, everybody, everybody to the left. I don't know.
I don't know.
Your session is over. I'll let somebody come on in. You have to be shy about it. Take that face.
I can't give it away.
So I can ask you.
Google search.
All right. All you're talking about.
Oh, yeah. You should.
My head is off. We have some. That's bad. Literally.
Yeah.
He was there. Well, foot on the truck. He was jumping. Excuse me. You ready? You ready?
You're gonna have to. Yeah.
Excuse this one. I call to order the May 7th Seabrook City Council meeting. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intended Republic for which stands on one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state of America, one individual.
Okay. Item 1.1, public comments and announcements. Does anybody? Okay. At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. For each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly in the microphone before making your comments. Paul Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Paul Robinson, Dickinson, Texas. I produce the Texas Outlaw Challenge and Texas Outlaw Fishing Tournament. I'll start with the fishing tournament.
Thank you. We're in our third year of the tournament. First year, we had 26 fishermen. Last year, we had 115, and we're looking to double that again this year. We listened to our petrochemical customers that became interested in the event, and they asked that we move it to a weekday instead of the Sunday of the Outlaw Challenge weekend, which is fine by me because I was pretty worn out by Sunday. But they suggested Friday of Father's Day weekend. So that's a nice connection for families and parents and children to come fishing and participate in those activities at the fishing tournament to start their weekend early. So we're looking forward to that maybe being a two-day event next year, depending on the growth, which we like because my responsibility is to bring people for the hotel rooms and book beds and beds. Having said that, Texas Outlaw Challenge, our powerboat event, is in our 17th year. I have to stop and thank you right now for your 17 years of support. That's what's helped this grow. It's your votes to approve our hot tax funds that have allowed us to grow so far. We've covered the Los Angeles Boat Show, Miami, Lauderdale. We were in Springfield, LA last weekend. We're in Orange Beach this weekend. This is advertising I'm talking about. We were in Lake Havasu, Arizona, late April. And of course, this is the advertising, the promotions, the exposure that we want to give our area and the city of Seabrook in our rooms. My job is also to keep raising the bar every year. I'm really proud. I'll say I'm proud. I won't hide it. I'm proud that Houston Yacht Club and Seabrook Yacht Club both accepted our invitations to participate in the event this year. So that's really kind of a milestone for me and the event to be recognized for professionalism, representing our area. We're doing a fun run for sponsors for a couple hours at the Houston Yacht Club on Thursday, and the Lakewood Yacht Club has really decided to host it with a red carpet, our Friday morning raceboat staging area. So the raceboats will stage there. We'll have our safety meetings. There'll be lots of photographs. All of you will get invitations to that. It'll be very, very nice at the Lakewood Yacht Club. And then, of course, we go out on the lake, do our race laps Friday morning, and we'll be out of the club by noon. So it's a little bit of low impact. Put our best foot forward for that activity. Keep it in Seabrook and really raise the bar this year for that. So again, thank you very much. I'm going to leave this resolution for no wake zone approval or review, I should say. We do this every year. We have a perfect safety record because the seven cities review this and approve it every year. And I'd like to leave it here for review this year. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Robert Lemme.
Good evening. Robert Lemme, 1830 Lakeside. Normally, I get up here to complain about something, but I got up here to let you all know about Kevin Paget and the City Works guys. I asked him something two weeks ago when we were here, and the next morning, the problem was solved. And I don't know how often they get the praise versus the negativity. So I just figured I'd get up here and thank him personally and the entire City Works for taking care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Mike Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Mike Robinson, 2613 and a half, Nassau Parkway, Barge 295. I understand last week, there were some concerning statements regarding Barge at the last council meeting. Sorry, not last week, but the last meeting. And I wanted to come and discuss a few items with you this evening. It was mentioned at the last meeting that Barge was back added again, and there have been multiple complaints recently. I would like to first say that for well over a year and a half, we've had a sound control protocol in place. We've purchased extremely high-tech sound monitoring devices, and we use them before and during all live acts in the yard. We've taken these complaints very seriously. We heard all the complaints loud and clear and have worked diligently to make sure that we are being good members of the community. We are simply trying to exist and conduct business without creating issues. We've taken it upon ourselves to meet with council members and city employees in an effort to improve our situation while working within the law. We've also recently met with the new chief of police and have established the basis of a good working relationship. Since January 1st, there have been 14 complaints. Only five had DB ratings associated with the complaints, with one resulting in a warning. Of the 14 complaints, five of them occurred at times when we, where we no longer offer any live music, which means that those complaints were likely coming from another location, possibly one of our neighbors. I'm not here to dispute the validity of any complaint, only that some of the complaints themselves are not consistent with the times that we are operating in the yard, and the ones that have been are within a few decibel levels. Also noted, 12 of the last 14 complaints occurred over four days. And each of those days they occurred had a much higher-than-normal southerly winds associated with that day. As we all know, the wind has a tendency to carry sound. We try and be aware of the wind direction and adjust accordingly. I think it should be noted that other than the aforementioned complaints, we've also been able to successfully conduct our special events without any issues, which brings me to the next issue. Yes, we recently requested additional special events, and here's why. First off, we only used three of the four events we had allocated last year. We believe that charitable organizations should be able to obtain their own special events that don't go against our allocation of four. This year, as an example, we've dedicated two of our events to local charities, one being an organization that provides after-school resources to the children of Seabrook. We're more than happy to continue to help these charities, but please keep in mind that these events are designed to help the charities. And every one that we have conducted so far has ended up with the Barge incurring additional charges because of the way special events are required to operate. Again, we want to be good members of the community. How could we say no to helping these kids? But wouldn't it be better if these organizations could apply directly to council and make their case directly to you? I hope this is something you will take into consideration. And lastly, there's the issue of using trailered restrooms to accommodate guests. We have a number of older guests that visit the yard and find it too far to walk to go all the way to the Barge. It's just too much of an inconvenience for our guests, and that area is fenced in, and a nice trailered unit could easily be removed in the event of a storm, and it wouldn't even be seen. It's my understanding that this issue has been cleared up with FEMA, and this is possible. I will let Gail and her staff go into further detail when appropriate, but building permanent elevated structures is extremely costly and not practical for this application. I know I'm not the only business with this need. There is Merlion, from what I understand, that could be a benefit, and also the residents who fish and enjoy time on Second Street. This would also make legal the current use of porta-potties being used at the baseball fields just a few blocks away. I would like to discuss this with members of council to understand what, if any, negatives this change in the ordinance would impose on the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and/or members of city staff may make announcements about city-community events.
Well, good evening. A lot of stuff coming up. Seabrook PD's Fourth Annual Blood Drive is Wednesday, May 15. It's May 15 from 11:00 to 5:00 PM, right across the road here at Seabrook Community House. Go by there and donate. Memorial Day is not that long after, on May 27. The city offices are closed and a remembering our fallen observance at Bay Area Veterans Memorial from 9:00 to 10:00 AM that morning. Definitely worth showing up. Other announcements, the zoning board of adjustment has two immediate vacancies. If you want to be on there or you're thinking about where you can contribute to the city, the planning and zoning board has one immediate vacancy. Applicants have to be residents of Seabrook and be registered to vote in Seabrook, and you can go on to the city website and find where to do that pretty easily. But if you're willing to volunteer for one of those positions, and there's three I'm open right now, please do so. Anything? Mother's Day?
Sunday.
This coming Sunday?
Surprise.
Mother's Day is this coming Sunday. Is it really? All right. I don't pay much attention to holidays. Have to forgive me on that one. I need to call mama. But Mother's Day is this coming Sunday. Please don't forget that either. Thanks, Tom.
Anything else? Anybody else? Moving on. 2.0 presentations, 2.1. Mayor to present a proclamation to express appreciation to the Open Space and Trails Committee for their service and achievements. Monica, come on up. Bring some more up.
Yeah.
Okay. Come on up. Whereas it, whereas it is with great honor and appreciation that we recognize the outstanding efforts and dedication of the members of the Corethers Community Garden and Open Space and Trails Committee for their tireless commitment to enhancing the beauty and vitality of our city parks, trails, and gardens. And whereas we extend our deepest gratitude to Chair Monica Camo, Vice Chair David Popkin, and Board Members Jesse Jones, John Cogashell, Sally Eltribus, Deborah Harper, and Nemo Jackson for their countless hours of volunteering, leadership, and teamwork in preserving and enriching our natural landscapes. And whereas Corethers Community Garden and OST Committee has demonstrated exceptional civic involvement by organizing community gardens, providing guided nature tours, hosting educational classes for girls and boy scouts, and facilitating badge achievements, thereby fostering a deeper connection between our residents and the environment. And whereas we commend Nemo Jackson for his outstanding efforts in writing and submitting the application for the Governor's Community Achievement Awards, resulting in Seabrook being awarded $160,000 for outstanding community improvement. Nemo's dedication to this cause over two years exemplifies his commitment to enhancing our community's environmental and aesthetic appeal. And whereas the Governor's Community Achievement Awards grant is one of the most esteemed annual honors in Texas for environmental and community improvement, and the awarded funds will be utilized for landscaping projects along state right-of-ways, further enhancing the aesthetic appeal of our community. Now therefore, I, Tom Kulupski, Mayor of the City of Seabrook, on behalf of City Council, our citizens and employees of the city, do hereby express our heartfelt congratulations and appreciation.
I can grab it. I'll grab the picture.
Good job, Nemo.
Ready? Continuing on, item 2.2 is polled, correct? Correct, okay. 3.1, consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the April 16, 2024 City Council meeting. And 3.2, approve the adoption of the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation's strategic plan for fiscal year 2024 through 2026. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 4.0, boards and commissions. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval and ratification of the city manager's reappointment of Callie Wilson to the Civil Service Commission as per Section 143.006 of the Seabrook Civil Service Rules and Regulations. This term will be for a period of three years, from June 1, 2024, through June 1, 2027. Move to approve 4.1.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 5.0, bid awards. 5.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the bid award for RFP number 2024-03-342, disposal of municipal sludge to GFL of Texas for municipal sludge disposal services of the wastewater plants, and authorize the city manager to sign a contract and any other associated agreements. Or 6.1, new business. Consider and take all appropriate action on the first reading of board. Okay. What was further down?
Five of awards.
Get awards.
Get tall.
Get awards.
Okay, all right. Sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, bring before you tonight the disposal of municipal sludge agreement with GFL of Texas. This allows for the municipal sludge disposal services for both wastewater treatment plants. Seabrook has utilized all of the allowable extensions with our former vendor, and tonight, we ask that you review and approve the contract agreement with GFL of Texas for a term of 12 months with possible extensions.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? That's what I thought. It's not on here. No, that's it. We're voting. That's it.
That's the better.
Yeah, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 6.1.
Second.
I'm sorry, 5.1.
Second.
Kevin, is this, is this for removal from the old plant now, for emptying the old plant?
There will be some removal of the excess that's left behind when there's demolition, and this contractor can assist with that as well.
So demolition contractor has a portion of it in his bid?
No. No, the allowable services for this particular contractor would be removal of sludge to a landfill or, if needed, belt press operations, which the city now can perform. But there's always a possibility something happens to the press. It goes down for a number of days. We can bring in this contractor to perform the services.
All right, that makes sense. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
6.0, new business. 6.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-12, the Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan. Brian.
Three, five years, the Texas Water Development Board and CQ requires us to update our water conservation drought contingency plan. Then the water conservation plan. We use the previous five years' data to make goals, set goals for the next five years and 10 years.
Can you turn your mic on?
Okay. This is another five-year update, and if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor? I move for the 6.1. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 6.2, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2024-11, authorizing the city manager or city managers designate to execute a master interlocal purchasing agreement with the North Central Texas Council of Governments to participate in the TechShare Cooperative Purchasing Program. Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item before y'all tonight is really just an agreement to allow city staff to take advantage of different trainings and other contracts and vendors through the co-op, the TechShare co-op, so.
Okay.
Any questions? I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions? Hear a motion? Move to approve 6.2.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous again. 6.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the acceptance and approval of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2022-23, conducted by.
This item will be postponed.
Okay, we're going to pull that one, too. 6.4, consider and take all appropriate action on the amendment to the Public Safety Fund 2024 budget to approve an additional $42,569.24 for emergency medical services and public safety-related items. Kevin.
Mayor, Council, we're asking for the additional $42,569 to outfit the two new Polaris Rangers that we got for PD. EMS is taking over the Polaris Ranger that PD had, the 2015. We have some work to do to it. And then, the power load system for the ambulance that we're going to keep in reserve, instead of having to change it out each time, we're going to buy a new one for the new unit that you all approved for us to buy, and everything on that truck will be brand-new.
Great.
Is there any questions I may have?
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Move to approve 6.4.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
7.0, routine business. City manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook Boards and Commissions, transportation projects for Houston rail spur, City of Seabrook CIP projects, and any City of Seabrook Grand Administration projects.
So Mayor and Council, no pretty pictures tonight. I'll make this short and brief. We've been working with the rail spur group on update meetings on the north.
Grand Administration.
Successful, the closure went off with no hitch. They've been continuing to update the completion of the rail line, so it looks like probably in the next 30 to 45 days, they'll be completed. You'll notice the rail's been taken up along the straight section from Geon Plant over to Red Bluff, so they're just about at the end of that completion. The arms for the quiet zones will be going across 146 and Old 146, and that will complete that project in whole. So they're continuing to keep us in the loop. I don't really have any further updates on the new 146 project, going back to La Porte. I'll continue to reach out to him. There's nothing that's substantial. However, just by visual, if you're in the Red Bluff intersection, you're seeing those piles go in for the additional lanes northbound and southbound. So I believe, based on past updates, we'll start to see those sidewalls come down. They have delivery of the city's branding MSE walls at their camp, so that'll be some of the next developments in the Red Bluff intersection. One of the things that staff's been, obviously, trying to see if there's a more definite timeline, is the improvement of that intersection. I think that will be the next thing. It's going to be kind of disruptive to those coming out of the east side, going over to the west down Red Bluff. So we have been told that when that does kick off, there'll be a complete closure there. So if we get any further updates, we'll let you know on that. Right now, on the current 146 project out here, we're still being told that by the end of May, which I think it's May 7, they're going to be wrapping up. Obviously, it looks like there's a little bit more cleanup work yet to do. Staff will be also going later this week over to Tech Dot to meet with the contractor that will be doing the landscaping. So we'll have the official kickoff, and we'll have some additional information. So again, mentioned before, we probably anticipate we'll have single lane closures when that contractor moves in for planting. There'll be riprap loading underneath the underpasses, so there will be some disruption with that additional contract coming through. Grand Administration, one item to kind of highlight there. You previously approved us going after the grant with Harris County Precinct 2 for the reconstruction of North Meyer. We did receive late Friday that we were awarded that grant with Harris County. To note, the commissioner did decide to do something, and I believe this is in our favor, in-house. We estimated what that construction would be for that, also adding sidewalks up to 146. That's always a guess of us doing that cost estimate. So we, the commissioner, because probably what we dealt with with the sidewalk project, if you remember on East, ended up being a little bit more, so we have to pay the difference. So he's opted to go Phase 1 and design the project first, and then in Phase 2, he'll award us the construction costs. That should keep our cost in check of exactly at 50% for both design and construction. But excellent news, we had estimated that project at $8 million, and that is the project that we're looking to come out of our certificates of obligation. So anything that we can do to leverage, get more street projects out of our CO money would be beneficial. So excited news on that one. CIP projects, obviously Kevin and them are continuing to work on closeout for the wastewater plant and getting full content through there. And so they're working on that. A lot of our other projects, not notable updates. A lot of our stuff is in design right now, so I'll take any questions.
Yes. West Side, Red Bluff, it cut off a lane, our left lane. Do we know why they've done that? There doesn't seem to be any work going on there. Do we know why that's being?
We do, what their explanation was, when you drive it, you can see the arm, the original rail arm, safety arm, was only made for the original width of Red Bluff. And so obviously, now with the rail being taken up, there's not a need for it, but that is a coordination now between Harris County and the Union Pacific on when they will get that arm taken out and then the concrete. So we've mentioned it a couple of times in these update meetings and been given a real definite time, but it will eventually come up. But it was because when the rail was still. But it was because when the rail was still, or track was still in play, and it could go across Red Bluff, it was too short of a safety arm. People could drive around it, and that's why the concrete was put in.
Do we know when they're going to pull the water line, the temporary water line off of the...
We have been in communications with the city of Pasadena. Our first communication was back to the city of Seabrook with some indication that that was our responsibility, so we have countered that to make sure that their team knows that is not infrastructure for Seabrook, and so we have not heard back from them yet, but I'll follow up.
I'll swear to God, thank. There's rumors going around from citizens that they are going to heighten the bridge over Pater Lake on Massaro Road 1. Have we heard anything about that?
I have not ever heard anything about that, no.
I got something. The boat ramp and then painting the sails on 146.
The painting of the sails is a request that's been made, so we've given them backup documentation. I don't have any, I'll check on that, but the quest is into TechDOT. The boat ramp, we have met with the designer that TechDOT has contracted with, and we have been assured verbally by the director that the design and ultimately the construction will still be for by TechDOT. What is taking so long at this point is they're trying to figure out with the proposed location of the boat ramp, what permits are required. Some of the permits can be upwards of 18 to 24 months, so that's what they're working with the core right now to figure out how long that will take.
And then one last thing to Kevin and Sean. It's a CIP project. They put the sidewalk in on at least one half of, in front of the Bay Area Veterans Memorial. Looks fantastic. Good job. And Kevin and Sean did not pay me a dime to say that.
Just one comment. So Gail, thank you and your staff and city council members for my card and my cake for my birthday this month, so thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? 7.2, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and Council, the next city council meeting is May 21st at 6:00 p.m.
Do I hear a motion? Move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned at 6:31.